It is nine fifteen. We will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, following the Open Meetings Act, which is posted at the entrance to this room. Our first order of business is to approve the minutes from the February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five Board of Equalization meeting.
Give my motion to approve those minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting we held on February eighteenth of two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please. Williams.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Brunson.
Aye.
Woller.
Aye.
Next, we have the certificates of correction and refund as submitted by the county assessor.
Morning.
Morning.
Julie Stinger, county assessor. You'll have two personal property taxless corrections this morning. One is an acceleration of taxes on a business that closed, RX Express Pharmacy. And the second one is, it's under North Platte Custard LLC, which is the new Freddie's building. The accountant seen that they had submitted some items that should have been on listed with the real property instead of the personal property. So she filed an amended personal property schedule for Freddie's. So that would be a correction for theirs.
Okay. So the first one for RX Express Pharmacy is for twenty-nine dollars on an acceler- to accelerate the two thousand and twenty-five personal property tax. The business closed. Do we do both of them together?
I think since they're both personal, you can, yeah.
And then the next one. Is it just the amount on the bottom line there, Julie, or all three amounts?
The bottom one.
Just the bottom one?
Could be the adjustment.
Okay. So for North Platte Custard, the amount on that one is three thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars and twelve cents. They filed the amended personal property schedule.
Madam Chair, it would be my motion that we approve the certificates of correction and refund as submitted by the county assessor and authorize appropriate signatures.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or discussion? Roll call, please. Brunson.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Aye.
Woller.
Aye.
Thanks, Julie. Our next item is a motor vehicle tax exemption application as submitted by the county treasurer.
Madam Chair, make a motion that we approve the application for exemption by the North Platte Baptist Church for a two thousand and five IC bus used to transport people to church. They now have a ride or unable to drive. Is recommended for approval by Sherri Newton, the Lincoln County Treasurer. My motion to approve this application.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or discussion? Roll call, please. Hugley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Brunson.
Aye.
Woodruff. Woller.
Aye.
Thank you, Christie. That's all on our agenda for the Lincoln County Board of Equalization. We will adjourn at nine nineteen and reconvene as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners.
We have a good snowpack in the mountains, Ken.
What's that?
We have a good snowpack in the mountains.
Uh. So you gotta get back.
Does it matter that there's no date there? Or should I just date it?
Range to get big snow. Haven't caught a lot on the east side. I think Eldora's only got a forty-one inch. Snowpack wet to the bullet. That's truly front range, though. That's like, what, twenty-five miles out of the valley.
Yeah, he usually signs it down in the clerk's office.
Okay. Thank you.
Was hoping we'd get a whole lot so we could haul it down to the Republican.
Yeah. That would help, wouldn't it? Shut the wells off.
It's amazing how much melted yesterday between the house and the barn. Yesterday morning, I skated to go out and check heifers. And this morning, there was not hardly any ice or snow left at all.
I went out in your swimsuit, as nice as it was.
You're welcome.
That, you ordered that personally, huh? Nice. Keep up, keep up the good work.
I don't care if it's a pail of ice. Wonder how much a new tool skill would cost of that. That's the repair.
Probably a scary number. I thought you were throwing it back at me.
Should've sent that one, uh, six thousand instead of one hundred dollars ago.
Good morning.
Safest room in the county now. They didn't want to come in here. They wanted to escape, didn't they?
They saw, they saw the.
I see, Gary. There's a tiger up in town. Flash swab butt. Big place new this week. Change of wheels. That one bag. Flash swab. Do you like that one bag? Something.
I don't think she went there.
No, I heard it. I just picked it up.
Oh, son. Yes, thank you. I just brought you two to chew together.
So annoying.
I think they need you out there, too.
They got it.
Make sure you say that. Make sure you say that.
I, I have a whole, I printed one. See if you got it.
I saw her bolting down the hall. It was like, yeah, she's been in.
Oh, thank you. Jerry, pay attention to line number two on this one. It's the same one I brought to your attention last night.
Okay.
And I addressed it through, um, building and grounds. But I think maybe I need to just call myself because it's even worse than the last one. And the last one was ridiculous. I better write myself a note.
Yeah, but that says it. It builds.
Yeah. Thank you. It is nine thirty. We now have discuss and consider action on an application by Roland and Diane Hoffman for Hoffman Administrative Subdivision on property located at eighteen oh seven six Hazel Avenue in R one Rural Estates District on property described as Lot Four and Five CW Anderson Subdivision, Lincoln County, Nebraska.
Judy Clark, Planning and Zoning Administrator for Lincoln County. So this subdivision attached to the review comments, you should have a preliminary and a final flat. The subdivision will consolidate two lots into one. The consolidation will create a thirteen point four six acre parcel. Planning staff has no objection to the subdivision. It is in conformity with the Lincoln County Compliment Plan and the zoning regulations. So essentially, all we're doing is adding an additional parcel to the existing home site.
Thank you for the explanation, Judy.
It would be my motion to approve the application by Roland and Diane Hoffman for Hoffman Administrative Subdivision on property located at one eight zero seven six Hazel Avenue in an R one Rural Estates District on property that's described as Lot Four and Five CW Anderson Subdivision of Lincoln County, Nebraska.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any questions or discussion?
Only question I would have is conversations I had this, this last week with a local Realtor brought up, um, questions about the survey. Do we have any concerns with that from the plan?
I think we will be okay.
Okay. All right.
My question, Judy, is what's the advantage of doing consolidating these two lots?
Well, if they decide they want to build an outbuilding on the south of the property, they wouldn't be able to do it if it wasn't part of their property because of the zoning. So you're allowed to have some, a few animals when you're in a residential district for, like, personal use. So if they wanted to put up an outbuilding, it would have to be up there by their house.
Oh, I see.
Otherwise, if they consolidate it, they could put it down there now. I don't know if they have any intentions of doing that, but that is one advantage to consolidating the two lots together. Because in a residential district, you have to have a residential structure in order to build this outbuilding.
Very good. Thank you. If there are no further questions, roll call, please. Williams.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Brunson.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Woller.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
May swing by your office later, Judy, if you're gonna be there.
I will be there.
Okay. Thank you. Must be for that printer or printer.
So. You're members of Lincoln County.
Thank you, Becky.
Yeah.
Can you put that in my pack up?
Yeah.
Thanks. I appreciate it. Okay. It is nine thirty-five. We now have a presentation by Pinpoint Communications. Sir, if you'd like to come up and announce yourself and sign in.
I am Tom Schumaker. I'm the president of Pinpoint Communications. We're based out of Cambridge, Nebraska. I'm here today to kind of inform as well as request a letter of support that I believe we, we gave a draft to. We're in the middle of application periods for the Nebraska broadband, uh, deed applications, the broadband equity and deployment grants that are coming out of the infrastructure bill that Biden had passed a few years ago. They're now just starting to get through all of the information and are starting the process of applications. We have historically been building a little history about us. We, we are a fiber overbuilder if you envision out of a smaller scale and more rural. That's what we do. We've been doing that for the last ten or fifteen years, overbuilding small communities, rural communities, and then optimizing through grant dollars through Nebraska Broadband Bridge Program as well as other CPF programs, which have a couple of projects funds we're out for. We currently serve and have a data center here in North Platte at State, East State Farm Road, the Hughes Data Center, kind of over by the Menards and, and the PM and Parks Commission Fishery Area. There's the, the big satellite dishes that you see, that building, that's our building. We, the anchor tenant is HughesNet. We had built, we had built fiber, actually have been built with a gentleman, Greg Renner, south of North Platte, which brought us to that area to kind of deploy. And, and we know that that area has not been very well served in the past. We have about ninety customers in that, in that area now. We have won broad, or, uh, bridge money in some of these areas that you'll see in, in J sixty-three, I believe, is the, is the area that we've, we've been looking at.
Is that area in purple?
Um, I believe, I'm trying to see where I'm at. No, J sixty-three's in the green, in the light green. And if you go down just a little bit, this, so what's unique about Lincoln County is there's about four DPAs, five DPAs.
What's a DPA?
Thank you.
Designated project area. So those were established by the bead office in Nebraska. They said, we're gonna throw all these locations in, and then we're gonna divide them apart so that they either make sense or they make zero sense. So they did it all by AI and said, let's push the button and see what happens. This is what the result was. And so if you zoom out just a little bit more, you can kind of understand my philosophy on this. So if you go over to Pass Brady and over by Gothenburg, that, that blue segment that you're seeing to the left here now ties to the one over by Gothenburg. All right? So there's really, the only logical play is for, which is crazy, is it fits perfect for us, but it probably fits perfect for nobody else. Because we are both in that Gothenburg area and we're both in the south, southeast, North Platte area, is what we call it. We won bridge funding to serve a good portion of what's in that DPA of J sixty-three and K seventy-one. And then, so we've got an obligation to build out several of those areas, which is an attachment to what we've already done through Bridge Two. So all of these things just kind of, it's like building, it's like house remodeling, I call it. You, you start in one area, then there's a guy on the edge, and then we're like, okay, well, what's the next program that we can bolt onto it? And that's what we've been doing. And that's what has, has created our interest in Lincoln County for bead. If you look at J sixty-three as a whole, we're not on the northern part of North Platte. We're not on the western part of North Platte. We're really just focused in on the southeast region of North Platte. And that's just because their, their limitations in the grants are gonna just make it impossible for us to make that J sixty-three as a total one fit, fit any kind of business case. We're not gonna be in town in North Platte. We're not intending to overbuild because there's already a great provider that, that handles most of that service. And it doesn't make any sense to bring in another overbuilder for the community. But these rural areas are a focus of ours, as, you know, that we've done. So a little further history of us, we started in Cambridge, Nebraska. Our first overbuilt property was Gothenburg, Nebraska. Since then, we have grown to about twenty-two small communities. Our largest market is Beatrice. So we, we actually have a southwestern corridor, and then we skip over and do a southeastern corridor. And it's all based upon the failures of the large carriers to do what they said they were gonna do. And that has just brought opportunity in our strategy of going to the areas of Nebraska City and Auburn and, and those areas in the southeast. And the densities are a lot different out there, to be honest with you. We see houses out here that are half a mile to one, or one house per mile to half a house per mile. When you get into the eastern corridor, that number changes from three to four houses per mile. And for guys like us out in the west, we're like, that's a metro for us. So, you know, that's, that's why we, we went in that direction. We've expanded to the tune of, five years ago, six years ago, we had fifteen hundred fiber passings and we're at about twenty-two thousand currently and, and continue to grow. So we're really focused on J sixty-three and K seventy-one in this area. So to put that into more perspective, just in layman's terms, how that fits. East State Farm Road, NPPD power to the east along East State Farm Road. South of there, there's a corridor into the hills that have several homes that are out past, if you look at New York, I think it's, it labels Big Lee or something, Big Ne.
Big Ne.
Big Ne.
Big Ne.
That area, kind of, and then south, you know, the state has all of these locations up in the hills that have no roads to them, so they just don't exist when you look at the map. But, so those are, those, that whole area, kind of south, we're not, we are just about a mile, not even a mile, we're probably a quarter mile north of the feed lot to the south is where we stop under the south side of that. And then, yeah, and so that, that's, but that'll, that'll encompass two applications that we do. One will come in an application of K seventy-one, and one will come in a partial application of J sixty-three.
So a question for you, Tom. So this is, this all fiber?
All fiber.
And when, didn't, when you guys first came to town, weren't you just wireless?
We've, we had some wireless properties, or wireless spectrum in, in years past up in this neck of the road.
Did I, I have, we have frien-, I, my family has friends that signed up with you because they were on the edge of town and they couldn't get hard, hard cable, for the lack of a better phrase. And so they said, well, we went with Pinpoint. So that's, I didn't even know really that you had a fiber system. So the next thing would be, when you, when you get these dollars, which is obviously necessary to be able to afford to expand your network. So then, you talked about the sparseness. So I live in the north end of the county, and Great Plains serves our area. So it was kind of a hodgepodge when they came out and laid down fiber.
Yeah.
I've got neighbors that still don't have fiber, and I've had it for four years. I'm spoiled.
Right.
So, and there wasn't, didn't seem to be a lot of logic to the way they did their thing.
Yeah.
Because they went down the Garfield table, for example, and they, they put fiber past a farmstead nobody's lived in for forty- nobody's lived in for forty years, thirty-five years. And then they stopped three miles east of that and didn't serve. Probably a dozen houses that were waiting for that. So, so what's your method to your, Matt, do you go by, if it's not a nine-one-one address, do you leave a service access point, or, I don't know how fiber works?
When we do it, we, when, so, in our theory is, is, so there's established locations that, that these programs say, these are locations that you need to do, right? That could be, when they go through that AI version, that could look like a building, but it's not. It's like a dilapidated old farmstead.
Right.
But it shows up as a location. When we do that, I send a guy out, we drive the routes, and we look at it and we say, okay. We, we at a minimum need to have access every mile. That's, that's our, our theory on it. And if we see something that is a house there, then we make access there. We make access to those, now, not to say that there's always some point that, that there's, like I said, the guy on the edge. We try to avoid that as much as possible, but sometimes, like in that scenario, I would have been like, I'm put, I'm gonna add those other dozens because that's density for a one-mile build or whatever it may be, so.
Well, not, not understa, sorry to interrupt, not, not, not understanding the technology, but, you know, the, the big thing with this was, you know, four or five years ago was the potential for expanding our population base because people could move from California, for example, and run, you know, whatever internet business because they could live out here in Moran Canyon and have high-speed internet. So I guess what I'm getting at is, when you do these expansions, is there, is there an avenue for somebody to take an old farmstead, for example, and say, gee, I, I love living out here in the middle of nowhere, low crime, but I can't get access to internet because they bypassed this property? So it's never, it's never an option to develop a, you know, a private business there?
Right. So our grant, so when we look at our grant applications, we draw, there's, there's two things that we provide to states. One of them is a polygon shape, and one of them is locations. It is our understanding and business acumen that says, if, even though there wasn't a location there at the time, it was inside of the polygon, so therefore I'm going to take the obligation to serve that.
Okay.
So it's a, it's a situation where you can't plan for everything.
Right.
Right? But you can do the best that you can while planning. And that's where providing access and making sure that we can, to cut into that cable, providing slack loops, things like that. There's a lot of things that you can do once the fiber's in the ground. And we put, we put everything in duct now, we didn't used to, but now we do. And the reason being is, there's always gophers, there's always something that happens. It's a lot easier for us to take a mile out, repole instead of replow. And so we can couple things together, we can fix things a lot easier. And it, and it really, the, the cost doesn't increase dramatically because the cost is generally, labor is the most expensive piece of how we do that.
So in theory, one of those old abandoned farmsteads, somebody could come out here and say, you know, my, my, my livelihood is all internet. I wanna build a house there.
I'm gonna go there.
And Pinpoint will come in and tie me up.
If you're in that territory that we said we were gonna build.
That's great, that's great.
Our strategy is, is that, I mean, I'm, I'm born and raised Cambridge, small-town America. We built fiber in Cambridge, Nebraska in two thousand and eight, when I first came back. And it's important, and it's, and it shows, it's, it's important in the rural areas. We have a ton of ag producers that are just, we can never get there fast enough, right? And everybody wants it yesterday.
Right.
There are solutions that can get you by in the interim, but there is no replacement for fiber, no question in my mind. And that's when, so when we've gone from a wireless, you know, wireless world to a fiber world, I, those were the decisions that we were making, saying, this is, this is a great product. Wireless was a great product to get market share, but at the end of the day, you really need to be plowing fiber. Because at the end of the day, that's what everybody needs, and COVID really exposed that. And it exposed it with our youth, it exposed the work from home requirements. And when that happens again, or if that happens again, we wanna make sure that that issue is not the issue. We don't wanna be the bottleneck in the, in the nation, so, that's our theory.
I appreciate you coming out in our neck of the woods because it wasn't the density. So I appreciate it, because to just come to one, two people, when you got a bunch of miles to do it, everybody else saying, eh, we'll take the lake, we'll take this, we'll take that subdivision, so.
Question that I have, you talked about, your facility is out there past the fish hatchery, is that correct?
Yeah.
North, right there on Victoria Lane?
Yeah, it's right on that, it's the State Farm Road, Victoria Lane, it's kind of sits in that corner.
And you mentioned something about East State Farm, how far east do you go on State Farm on your?
Current route right now, we, that's, we start on East State Farm Road, right there at the, at the data center. We come, we go west towards the Menards and then head south, one mile, not even, not, like, the, the back road up eighty-three. So we will come out of our data center and head west, or, head.
East.
East, I'm sorry, we will head east. So west, we go to the corner of eighty-three. And then we, then we come south there and come up the backside. We'll come east out of our data center to serve that Big Knoll area, so. But we don't, we don't cross, right now, we don't cross the highway to, to the college yet, so.
Okay, thank you. So, I mean, I don't think, I think all five of us understand the importance of fiber, getting into rural Lincoln County, rural America, to be frank, and the importance of it. The dollars coming through the Nebraska bead program, there's a lot, and.
Not enough, but there's a lot.
I agree, there's by far not enough to serve as their goal states every, every home in rural America. It's gonna be highly competitive. So your ask of us today is a letter of support.
Yep.
Are there other companies that are looking at this area that, or could potentially serve this area?
There are other, other companies that, that I would assume are looking at it, but I don't know. They, they, there's other companies that have assets in the county that they could. What I've done in my research so far is, the business model's not great. Even with a twenty-five, only putting twenty-five percent matching, twenty-six percent matching. There, it's tough, it's, it's ten and twenty-year paybacks. So I, I agree that I think it's gonna be competitive, but I also have this kind of secondary thought in my head that, that if I can't make the model work, there's a lot less risk-averse companies out there than we are to say they, they take that. Because if you really look at, at the business case, if you're gonna spend, let's just say it costs you ten million dollars, you know, fifteen million dollars, and you gotta come up with a quarter of that. Okay, so that's two and a half, three, four million dollars. And I'm gonna pick up three hundred homes. That math doesn't work very well, right? I could go to, I, you know, somewhere else, I could go to Nebraska City and spend three million dollars and get, you know, six, five thousand homes.
No, I get that.
Yeah, that's the, that's where I say, that's where I start to question my own judgment on that, that too. But yes, you're right, it is gonna be, in theory, it would be competitive. In theory, there will be more people that would come ask for the letter of support. The, the letter of support piece is, we know that we're not gonna take, we're not gonna be a priority project because we're not taking the entire DPA. And so that's gonna kick us to the second round. Now, we know the risks of that. If somebody comes in and says, "J sixty-three, I wanna do the whole thing," then we're at risk. That's where we're at, we may not get it. What we're looking for is a support letter saying, you know, we, we support Pinpoint as a carrier to come into our, into our county for these applications. It doesn't restrict you, it's not exclusive, I guess is what I would say. I wouldn't expect it to be exclusive. The only re, only way I would expect it to be exclusive is, is if we said, hey, we're gonna come and put every application and build and, and do every DPA at a hundred percent, and we wanna partner with you guys as a commission. That's it. And that's, and that's not what we're asking for.
So I suppose my only, my only pause is if this is a competitive market, these dollars are competitive, there's gonna be multiple people applying for them, is the letter of support something that's required for the application? Because you're making a compelling argument.
Sure.
For your, for your submission. Are we gonna get multiple companies coming to us, and should, should this really be our role is picking a company to throw our weight behind?
Right.
That's, that's my pause.
There is a requirement, and there's points that are associated with the application for us to. Some people call it a requirement, I look at the rules and I say, it adds points to our application. That, so if there's somebody coming into the county that's wanting to do bead, they should be sitting here in this seat, having this dialogue, especially if they're doing work in your county today. You know, if they're not doing work in their, in your county today, I would, as a commissioner, sit and pause saying, who are you and why are you coming now? Right? When did, why did it, why does it matter today when it didn't matter six months ago, or a year ago, or twenty years ago? So that's, I understand your, your pause, I get that. We look for support with all the counties that we've been at, we've been at actually every county that we're going to, and have so far gotten all the support that we, that we've asked for on that. And those are, we've been to Niemaha, we've been to Cass, we've been to Odo Counties, we've been to Furnace, we've been to Harlan, and Dawson, so those are the counties that, that we're focused on in Lincoln now. And so we're working through those, but, yeah, I mean, I, I get it. And with us, with us saying, you know, we don't wanna necessarily, we're saying it's not exclusive. Somebody could come in, and I could say, you know, ALO probably could come in very easily and say, hey, we wanna edge out into this part of the county, would you support our application in this? And I think it's a valid review with those guys because I think they do a decent job.
Okay.
What is the?
Go ahead, go ahead, Jerry.
What is the timeline on the projects that you're talking about?
So there's a four-year build-out requirement once we, once we get approval on it. So from the application perspective, the OA, which is the organizational application, that is open right now and it'll close on March ninth. So we have to put that application in before anybody even knows that we're gonna, before we even know if we can bid and bead. Right? So we're putting that together currently. I don't see any issues with that because we've been a grant recipient for, you know, five to seven rounds of different grants. So that's, that's really a non-issue. And then the second phase is, I believe, April ninth is the, when we have to have our, our actual project applications and PA portion of that. And that's April ninth.
April eleventh, actually.
Okay, eleventh, sorry. Is that's when that's due. And so, and then they will start to make decisions after that. And so I, I anticipate we will start to see whether we won in June, July timeframe, gives us this, this summer to start building. Then we have four years from when we get approval to do those build-out.
Four years, okay.
In some of our other grants, we've got eighteen miles on those. So we really think that four years is, that's a lot of build time.
Tom, can you tell me, how many addresses in the area that you're looking at are either underserved or no service at all right now?
So those that we're, that we are looking at, I would say that eighty percent of them are unserved on that, on twenty-five and three, right? And so I would say that there's some underserves that are out there. And it's such a, to me, that is a, a poor cast of discussion. Because with Starlink, there is availability, it's expensive, but it works, it's an option, right? Is it grade A option? No, but I, I am a subscriber as well because I wanna see how it works, and it works pretty well. Every time I've turned it on, it seems to do what I want it to do. Am I pushing a gig? No, I'm not. But I can stream TV, I can do what I need to, I can work from wherever I wanna work from when I have it. So, so I would say that, we look at those and say, everybody that's in there is desperately wanting something other than what they have. And it's probably because it's not high enough bandwidth speed, whether that's, you know, unserved or underserved by definition. I'm gonna say that every one of those is, is somebody that needs something, more than what they've got.
So the, the window that opened recently, you explained that's just the organizational application, it's not your project, your actual project application. And it's my understanding, I've been to many, many broadband meetings. Most recently, just two weeks ago, I believe, in Carney. Patrick Haggerty from the broadband office did a session, and then Planning and Zoning also did a session. So these aren't necessarily my concerns, but they're concerns that I've brought back from other meetings, from other areas and the experience that they've had. And one of them is, so you're applying in this area, do you go into the adjoining counties and, and work right around? Cause one of the concerns that has been expressed is consistency among the providers, where you're crossing lines in and out of other territories that other providers might be building in. Do you guys have like a standardized practice that you use?
On our construction practices?
Yes.
Yeah.
With all of the providers, everybody follows the same?
I would say not everybody follows the same.
Okay.
We have our standards. Our standards are based on what we would say the RUS standard is, Rural Utility Services. And that's just because of how we were, we brought up. Cambridge Telephone's a rural utility service borrower. So when you borrow money, they have standard requirements of how you build. That's forty-two inches in the, in the rural areas, eighteen to twenty-four inches on your drops, those types of things. Vaults are a certain size, things like that. You know, placement, we like to be, our placement of cable, our standards are, we like to be on the, on the road edge, right, where the grass meets the road. And then our vault placements are on the backside of the, of the right-of-way. So we come, we come here and then we'll come out, and then we'll place a vault, and then we'll come back and we'll go down the running line of that. That's, that's our standards, forty-two to, you know, forty-six is what we like to be at. We don't like to be any shallower because erosion and everybody cleans it. We don't like to be in the bottom of the ditch because when guys clean up ditches, we become a problem. So that's kind of been our, our method to that. And I would say that the majority of the guys that I know that are long-term telco type of builders build on that same standard. But I can't say that for some of these other guys that just go ripping through counties and states and create us those problems that are concerns of commissioners, and I understand that. We try not to be that guy.
So the person doing the, the digging and the laying of the cable is employed by you or a subcontractor?
As a subcontractor of us or our employees. So currently, we have, we're building our own, we've got three construction crews that are doing mainline, and then we have our own drop crews internally, but we also use subcontractors. So like Greg Renner for SMSI is a subcontractor of ours, so.
Are you familiar with the NACO toolkit that they have put out? Have you, you've participated in conversations and maybe even helped develop that toolkit or given them feedback?
We've been in the discussions, our legal counsel has given feedback to that. We believe that there is some baseline to standardization and permitting, but we also understand that there are some, some gaps in that, that there's a lot of overreach that could create problems that, that are bigger problems than, than we see, so. There's a, there's a balance in there somewhere, but I don't know where that's at yet.
In my last conversation at the meeting in Carney, two, two primary concerns came out. One, you know, these are, there is a lot of federal money being funneled into this project. And one of the concerns expressed by Planning and Zoning was that, you know, if, if there weren't standardized practices that were being followed, and, and we had a whole bunch of providers coming in and frantically putting in fiber, that the county would be left to clean up behind the, you know, in the right-of-ways where the work isn't done per the prescribed method. And so we, you know, this is supposed to benefit Lincoln County, and
Sure.
I feel like it's our duty here and our road department management team to make sure that when you guys leave, when the work is done, there's not gonna have to be county dollars. there's not going to have to be county dollars to come in and fix things that weren't done per practice, so.
Yeah, just in response to that, I understand that concern. I think a lot of that gets dealt with through current permitting process, right? So we come in, we'll provide you our maps, we'll provide these things and say, hey, here's where we're going, this is where our running line is going to be. And in there, if I'm not mistaken, there is some kind of like recourse or conversation language that deals with restoration, right, and those types of things. It is, our deal is like, okay, if you get a washout and your roads department needs to get ahold of us if there's a washout, we're going to come fix it, right? We don't want to see that, we have a liability risk on that as well. We want to make sure it's maintained. Those are the things that we live by. And we've done that with every county. And so I don't have the issues with those types of standardizations at all. It's just the overreach of, you know, okay, are we now, you know, charging $1,000 a mile for permitting because there's all this money that's coming into the market? That just creates more problems, right? I don't think the influx of carriers coming into these DPAs is going to be a lot different than what you've already seen today. And the reason being goes back to the business model. If you're not there and don't have fiber or have any kind of game going on currently, if you're going to build fiber in that network, it's just not going to financially work. You can't go and expect to stand up a whole central office and a whole operation in a whole brand-new region if you're not already touching it. Because the math doesn't work. And so I think that's going to be more so... What you may see in round two is if somebody doesn't bid, get a bid on something, you may see a brand-new provider come in with some hybrid wireless thing that could create problems. I could understand that risk. But I still think that's a low possibility. And that impact of what you see will be less because they're not going to be in the ground as much. They're going to be doing it as well.
Go ahead, Joe.
Tom, question. We have standards, our road department is to anything buried within the county right-of-way. We spent quite a little time on that, and we take it seriously. And we have highway superintendent and assistant superintendent come out and inspect that, make sure it's done right. You have any problem complying with those?
No.
Answers my question, thank you.
And you, to segue off of Joe's, sorry.
Yeah, great.
Have you reviewed the revisions that we've made just in the last year or so?
I have not personally, but I would...
We have a 16-foot berry minimum. Is that what it is?
I don't have a clue about that, but we'll do our best.
You might want to review our new...
I'll review them. I generally will set our team up to be like, wait, we're going to take care of what needs to be taken care of.
Because we do charge a fee by the linear foot of disturbed road, so.
Enlighten me, what is it?
I want to say it's two or three cents of linear foot, and then we have...
Yeah, I think we've committed inside of that before.
You have.
I think we have, yeah. So we've accepted it before. Here's what I, the ones that I don't like are, you know, right out of the gate, $500 a mile, you know.
$400?
Yeah, I don't like that either.
Sorry, I interrupted.
I can handle cents.
Did you have something else?
Cherry.
The question that I have is, go back to the beginning. It's the light blue area up there towards Gothamburg that you're wanting to serve?
So now, we're going to be, so it's this, so K-71, you see there?
Is it dark blue?
Yeah, it's a little, it's a darker than that, yeah. So that one is L-71, the lighter blue, that's actually in Dawson County. The K-71 is the one that overlaps Dawson and Lincoln, right? And so this is over here, this is southeast North Platte. That's part of K-71. And then J-63, which is the green just above there, that's the portion that we would also...
That's my question is if you're headed over towards the further east blue area.
This one?
Yeah, and do you pick up customers along the way as you go?
I have a network already between North Platte and Gothamburg. So that's how we feed that. All of our, so those houses in between where it says Brady, there's four locations right there. And that, those actually are right adjacent to a network that we just have been on-demand base. So we'll cut into our network. We've put in applications before and people have said that they're served, and I don't believe that. And they keep showing up as unserved, so we're going to take another stab at those. But we've got fiber that runs right by there that we have vault access into. So when you were asking, can you get access to somewhere? We try to put vaults occasionally so we can cut into that, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, the, my comfort level is pretty high with your company, Tom. I mean, your family was the Kool-Aid dynasty, right? And I know by reputation, you guys are very good stewards in the communities you serve and when you sort of this pinpoint thing. And so we're basically colleagues dealing with a local provider, not out of touch somebody that's from Omaha or Denver. These people are from Nebraska and they...
We're locally owned, locally operated. Our ownership consists of a local attorney, three brothers, and then we have an outside board member, and that's what we have. It's been, I'm a third-generation operator, so.
But I've heard nothing but positive things about, you know, the service that Pinpoint has provided in communities that they've touched so far. And I guess I see no, I don't have a lot of qualms as far as endorsing your expansion of fiber to our citizens. I think it's a fantastic thing. Because quite candidly, if it were a high-profit, quick payback, somebody'd already be there.
It'd already be them.
I mean, that tells you right there. That's why it's underserved.
Tom, I will thank you for coming in and helping share this information with us. It's a lot, and this is a long conversation. I think I've participated in bead meetings for two, three years maybe, going off and on. It kind of went real hot at first and then calmed down for a period and...
Then it gets wound up again when they say, well, we're going to freeze all the money. And then we're like, oh, let's not do that.
Well, I think you answered a lot of the questions that I had and the other board members. I will say that it was recommended at our meeting last week that the toolkit that NACO and the bead office are working on together with the providers is still a work in progress. And while I'm not opposed to giving, especially local providers, letters of recommendation or support, they did recommend at our meeting last week that we hold off on issuing those until they got the toolkit finalized and sent out for our legal team to look over. Commissioner Brenz and I are on the Planning and Zoning Committee, and we are attending along with, I believe, our legal counsel, Mr. Volkmer, the Planning and Zoning Conference, which is the first week of March in Carney. And we hope to participate in more conversations there. So if you'll make sure that we have your contact information.
Yep, I think somebody has, you know, between Renai and the secretary.
So Tom, between March 9th and April 11th, okay? When do you need this letter of recommendation?
Good question, Joe.
So we're probably putting our application, if we had it April 1st, we'll probably, I don't anticipate that we're going to get our applications done like two weeks that early. I mean, I've got too much work to do.
Gives the board a feel, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate it. Is there any other questions or...
And I think you guys have a draft one.
We do, thank you for providing us with that.
There's no authorship pride at all on that. So you guys feel free to, however you want to word it, whatever your legal department says.
We let our gifted poetic, legal counsel, yeah, work his magic on those letters, so. But thank you for coming in and sharing all this information.
Thank you for your guys' time, appreciate it.
Very good, thanks.
Thanks.
I am going to move ahead to hear concerns from elected officials, department heads, and their representatives. Do we have anything?
Yeah.
I think that's the hot seat.
This can turn on the mics.
Oh, I heard him this way. Did you get any feedback?
This is just to give you guys a little information on the project work. Did you pass those out?
I did not.
Could you just go around and introduce yourselves for the YouTube?
Jerome Kramer, sure.
Captain Dan Newton.
Lieutenant Penny Wall.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's just kind of a courtesy deal because it's a large expense. As you know, we try to put off all of our large spending till the end of the year to see exactly what we have for spending. This is a large expense. This is actually the guardians, these are the instruments that we scan wristbands, we scan the doors. We, they have a tracking system that tells when we scanned and how often and what happened during that scan, whether they received medical, medicine, suicide checks. Everything is recorded there. And these are a little more advanced than what we have now. We're getting into life, some of them have already lost their life. But that is a very important tool. It's going to come in very handy in some of our in-custody deaths. It's taken a lot of questioning out of a lot of the stuff we've done, proof that we've been where we said we were. It's not, it's nothing you can argue, it's in black and white. But anyway, we need to upgrade some of those. And even the ones that we have, which are very few, some of them we have have this upgraded technology, some don't. The older ones, they're into life anyway. So we're looking at getting everything up to the new technology. And this would look like a good time to do it because we are 300,000 under budget right now. So this is just route we were taking and we just wanted you to know, I guess, that this is what we're looking at. And rather than see a claim, I like to answer some questions before we do a expense like this, so.
This kind of technology is very proactive on your part to stay a step ahead of litigation in the work that you do at the jail. And I think we're all pretty cognizant of that and the risks involved in that. So I appreciate the fact that you're staying on the front edge of this kind of thing.
Yeah, we've done quite well this year, but there's some other stuff that'll probably come up. But it's doing well. Staff really watches the expenses, don't buy anything we don't absolutely need.
I would absolutely agree with that. I think that's well-known by all five of us that you and your staff are very cognizant of the budget and the taxpayers' money, and you do your best to keep things in check. And you only come to us when you have a true need, so.
Appreciate that.
Keeping Captain Dan out of daylight donuts has been a significant saving.
It's really cut into my free time.
Bringing a sack of donuts.
You know, who always partakes in the Dunkin' Donuts?
Yes, I do.
And I was quiet this whole time.
He's poking.
I didn't.
That's true, you didn't, I apologize.
Save that for next time, I'll be back next Monday.
Yeah, next Monday.
Next Monday.
Uh-oh.
So just a couple of questions, because you know I always have questions. It looks like there's an annual licensing fee, is that that first, that's that first amount on the sheet?
That's that license to steal that we always have to do with, yeah.
And that's paid annually, or that's just a one-time?
I don't know, they come back to get it every year.
Every year?
I get angry every year because it gets you nothing.
Yeah, just the right to use their software, I think. So I suppose they probably update and keep it all current and working, which is...
And I think they give you their phone number, I think that's a point.
Do every one of your inmates wear one of these bracelets?
Yes, and there's one on every donor.
And every contact that you have with them, you scan that, and that helps with the accurate documentation?
At least it's something new, what was it you explained, Mary?
Well, with the new technology, there are several things that it will do. But the one thing that I really like about it is it will, you know, if we're predictable in corrections, then our safety goes down.
Yeah.
So the new technology helps us become unpredictable because it will assign us a predictability score. The higher your predictability score, the less safe you are. And so the goal would be to have a lower predictability score. And it also has a few other features that would be really beneficial, but...
Very good.
Predictability breeds complacency, and complacency kills, so.
Well, listen, I'm pretty good in unpredictability. If you need any help, give me a call, I'll be able to share some things with you.
We're hiring.
Yeah, we are.
Another thing I see on here that I like is the onsite training. So technology is only as good as our understanding of it. So yeah, that's a benefit that I think is a great investment, so. Very good, thank you guys for sharing this information and giving us a heads-up.
Thanks for your time.
Any other questions or comments? Thanks for coming and seeing us.
Thank you.
Tyler, do we have a need for a closed session today?
We do.
All right, and who all do we want in?
Well, unless Brian has something. I wouldn't make Brian leave if he's got something.
Do you have something for us, Brian?
No.
Um, thank you. County Attorney's Office. If someone would take us to the closed session to discuss pending or imminent litigation, please.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet, not yet.
You can leave. Can we get a motion to go into closed session?
I would make a motion to go into executive session at 10:21 for the purposes of discussing pending or imminent litigation.
And who would we like in the room?
Um, myself and Rebecca Orling.
And the Board of Commissioners?
All on Mosley, I got to go first.
Okay, I will restate that we are going into closed... Oh, need a second, sorry.
A second.
Second, okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Brenz?
Aye.
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Aye. And I will restate that we are going into closed session at 10:22 with the Board of Commissioners and the County Attorney's Office to discuss litigation.
Okay, we are all present?
I make a motion to come into open session at 11:36.
Check.
We have a motion and a second to come back into open session at 11:36. Any remarks or discussion? Roll call please. Friends?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Hubert?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Wood. Aye. Our final item is committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? Any other discussion for the good of the county? Becky, anything you'd like to give us a heads up on or remind us of?
This week...
Just a couple of things. Because I had prayer this week, I will do mugs in the morning tomorrow unless somebody really wants to take that away from me. Speak now. Also, our disclosure. When were those? Do the C1 forms?
They're due by March 1st.
By March 1st. Okay.
Saturday.
Very good. So if you haven't done that, please get that turned in with...